Good evening. Is that, is the mic working?
No.
It's a little.
Well, I'll tell you what. I was a teacher for like forty-five years, so I've got a big booming voice. Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
We need the microphone because, you know, we're supposed to use the mic.
Okay.
Yeah, in case, we don't know if there are people.
Right, right, right. Okay, well, but it's, it's not working.
No, yeah, that's why we need to fix it.
He's fixing it, he's back there. Alright. If I could do a song and dance, I would.
Yeah.
I think you might run screaming from the. Try it again. Hello. Okay, good evening. Uh, my name is Lauren Friedman, and on behalf of, um, the League of Women Voters and the King County Library System, I want to welcome you to the Burian City Council Candidate Forum. Before we begin, I would like to read our land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of First People of Seattle, the Duamish and coastal Salish people, past and present. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish and coastal Salish tribes. And now I would like to turn, um, the event over to our moderator, Vicky Rudin.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening, everyone. I want you to be able to see me, but I also want to be comfortable while I'm making my remarks. So I'm gonna sit down, and I hope that'll still be alright. Our timers this evening, and that's a very important thing because we try to keep our, our events moving ahead in a timely and controlled manner. Our timers are sitting here in front, they're Nancy and Pat, and they will, I will be announcing how much time each part of our program has. And they will be keeping track of how the time is elapsing, and they will hold up cards to help speakers, that's only the speakers up here, as well as you in the audience when you have your opportunity. Want to wave those cards so they can get an idea of what you're gonna be doing. Excuse me a minute, Lauren has something else she wants to tell me. Actually, I'll let Teresa.
We're gonna start these. Soy Teresa, trabajo para las bibliotecas. Si alguien necesita interpretación al español, por favor avísenos. Tenemos ahí los sets, les podemos repartir. Y para que nos digan si es que vinieron con la expectativa de tener el evento en español, se lo podemos repartir, sí? Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Anybody? We are very pleased to be able to have this event here in the library because the library has this arrangement for interpreters. So that was what that was about. If there are people in the audience who are, um, wishing to have what goes on immediately interpreted, that's what they're here for. And also, if people in the audience wish to ask a question, it will also be translated, interpreted. Please note, it is League of Women Voters' policy to not allow any video or audio recording of our forum unless it has been authorized in advance by the League. And thanks to our videographer, Thomas Swainer, who is over there, who is our library contact as well and has made this room possible for us. So he is recording the event. We'll have a link to the recording on the League's website within the next few days. The website is www.lwvskc.org. And I believe that's on the programs you were given when you came in. The barcode on your agenda also provides a link to the website. And we would hope that if you have family, friends, neighbors who are unable to be here tonight, that you will tell them that that's how they can see what transpires here tonight. As our other forums take place over the next couple of weeks, recordings of those events will be available as well. And although we've already commented, I do want to again thank the interpreters who are providing the assistance tonight, Trinidad and Christina. Let me say a quick word about the League of Women Voters. The League is a national, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization whose purpose is to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Our goal for tonight's forum is to provide city residents with the information which will help them be informed and knowledgeable voters. And you can find more information about the League at the membership table. Now, did everyone get an agenda as they came in so that you can follow along with what we're doing? Now again, I will ask you, if you haven't already done so, turn off your cell phones, including those cellphone cameras and any other devices that make no sense. The League of Women Voters is committed to fostering civility in public discourse. Civility begins with the openness to listening to points of view that may be different from your own, and respect for others' rights to hold opinions that differ from ours. With that in mind, we ask that everyone be respectful of the candidates, our timers, and other volunteers. Please remain silent unless you've been recognized to ask your question, and please hold your applause until the end of the forum. Final logistics note, there are restrooms located on both floors of the library, and in case of emergency, please exit using the stairs. Now on to our panel of candidates. The Burian City Council consists of seven members elected in staggered years for four-year terms. City council members establish city policies and laws, adopt an annual budget, approve appropriations, contract for services, and grant franchises. All council members are at large, meaning that they serve the city as a whole, as opposed to a specific district. Three seats are up for election this year. We invited all six candidates to participate in this forum. However, only the three you see seated before you could commit to be here. We asked the three who are not here if they would send a representative to read a statement on their behalf, but they did not opt to do that. In the order of their position number, we'll ask each candidate to make an opening statement of no more than three minutes. Following the opening remarks, it is your turn in the audience. Audience members may pose questions for one or all candidates who are present. You'll have thirty seconds to ask your question, and the candidates will have one minute to answer. I'll then offer each candidate the opportunity for a rebuttal to what the other candidate or candidates have said. Rebutts must be no longer than one minute. Please keep these time limits in mind and keep your eye on the timers so you'll know when your time is up. I believe all of you were offered a note card and pencil when you came in. The idea there is that you will write your question in advance, if you would like. This makes it much easier when you go to ask your question because you've already thought about it and made it as economical in words as possible. You may address your question to a particular candidate or to all candidates who are present. However, all candidates will be given the opportunity to answer all questions. We'll give everyone in the audience the chance to ask a question before taking follow-ups or multiple questions from the same person. We'll then give each candidate one minute for closing remarks, and this will happen in the reverse order from their opening statement. Okay, candidates, we've asked you to introduce yourself in three minutes or less. We hope you might tell us, why are you running for office? What are your qualifications to be on the city council? And what are your goals for this coming term of office? Let me remind you again, candidates, keep your eyes on the timers so you can gauge how much time you have as you speak. The candidates running for position two are Sidney Moore and Linda Ackey. Sidney is with us this evening. Sidney, your opening statement.
Thank you so much. Uh, I wanna start off by thanking the League for hosting this, the library, all of our attendees, the wonderful people who manage all of the equipment, who make this possible, and of course, our interpreters as well. Um, I'm Sidney Moore. I am currently a Burian City Council member. I've been in office since January of 2020. It's been a rocky couple of years, honestly, for our community, and, um, I am really proud of the work that we've managed to do despite the immense trials that we have faced as a community. A little bit about me, I am a mother of two wonderful children, ages eight and ten. Um, I raised them here in Burian, and this is our home. We love this city so much, and I am so proud to be able to take an active role in creating a city that serves as an amazing home for my kids and my family. I currently serve on the board of, uh, four local nonprofits, including the Burian Library Guild, very proud of that. Um, the Tukwila Pantry, which is a food bank that serves Sea-Tac, Tukwila, and Burian. Uh, and the Multi-Service Center of South King County. We provide a number of services, including a food bank, low-income housing, GED training, things like that, and the Burian Arts Association. So, um, I've been actively engaged in our community in a leadership role for many years now. I've actually been in leadership positions in nonprofits for over a decade. In addition to that, I have spent quite a long time volunteering for many, many different organizations across our community, um, including the Burian severe weather shelter. I've been volunteering since day one of them opening. Every winter I go out and, uh, work to do outreach to our unhoused population, get them in safely. The Burian Clean Sweep, I do that, I think, every year for the last several years, um, where we pick up garbage throughout the city. There's just a lengthy list of different things that I've been involved in, and serving in a leadership position as an elected representative is one I am incredibly proud to do. I ran for this position because my community members asked me to. They felt that I would be a good representative for them and would fight for our community, and I believe that I have done that to the best of my ability. Uh, some of the things that I have worked for are passing tenant protections, eviction moratoriums, hazard pay, increasing our human services budget, increasing our arts budget, um, putting out grant funding for small businesses. So, uh, I really want that work to continue. I wanna work towards a public health approach dealing with, uh, the myriad of issues we face in our community, sustainability and housing for all. And with that, I believe I'm at my time.
Thank you, Sidney. The candidates for position four are Patricia Hudson and Kevin Schilling. Patricia is with us this evening. Patricia, your opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the King County Library for hosting this forum tonight, and to the B-Town Blog for livestreaming us, and to our neighbors who could not come out tonight and have an opportunity to hear our words. My name is Patricia Hudson, and I'm running for city council position number four. As a career human resources professional, I have training and experience collaborating with stakeholders of varying interests to find solutions to complex problems. I've worked for years to develop and implement programs for the employees I support. I've spent my career working for and fighting for working families. As your next council member, I will collaborate with my colleagues on council as well as with local nonprofit and social justice organizations, our county and neighboring jurisdictions, to bring the resources we need to Burian to fund programs that ensure all of our residents have the opportunity to thrive and to remain in the city of Burian. I raised my two sons in Burian as a single parent, and I know firsthand the struggles many of you face to keep our children safe and to keep a roof over our heads and food on the table. As your next Burian City Council member, I will work for my constituents to support new workforce development programs focused on creating jobs within livable, with livable wages for those marginalized within our community. I will fight for affordable housing based on a person's or family's income. I will use my relationships, knowledge, and experience to find sustainable solutions for our unhoused residents. I will work together with our regional partners to bring more options for mental and behavioral health programs for people of all ages, and to increase safe, fun, and affordable recreational activities for children within our community. I will work to develop sustainable energy incentive programs and increase transportation options to get around the city and beyond. Like many of you, I too come from a union family where I was taught the importance of solidarity and standing by my community. For years, I have watched members of our community suffer, striving for livable wages, seeking access to healthy food and access to healthcare and affordable housing. I've seen too many of my neighbors forced to move out of the city to find safe, affordable housing and opportunities. I stepped into this race to make sure that we could support my community and was very frustrated with the lack of action that I saw with many of, the majority of my council members. I am the change agent you seek, not just another empty voice, but a person of action. I will work to bring the change that the city of Burian needs to create opportunities, not just for the few, but for the many. The time for change in Burian is now. My name is Patricia Hudson. I'm running for position number four. I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. The candidates for position six are Alex Andrade and Crystal Marks. Crystal is with us this evening. Crystal, your opening statement.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Crystal Marks. My pronouns are she and they, and I am running for Burian City Council, position six. I am a disabled woman, a fifteen-year nonprofit professional, mother of four kids, ages eight to sixteen, and caregiver to a disabled Army Combat Veteran and the former deputy mayor of the city of Burian. I also lead a volunteer organization that focuses on homeless outreach and teaching free self-defense and bystander intervention. I'm running for Burian City Council because our community is demanding action, and I have the necessary experience to hit the ground running in January. I want to help build a community where everyone has a safe and affordable place to live. I want to help build a community where everyone feels safe and respected, and I want to build a community that is sustainable and livable for future generations. On safety, I know that fully funding our community's needs is the best way to build real safety. For too long, we've relied solely on police for everything, while at the same time, under-investing in housing, infrastructure, schools, and healthcare in our community. Together, we can build real and lasting safety by investing in the root causes of harm and letting the police focus on doing the thing they were hired to do, which is addressing violent crimes. Real safety is when people have a place to live, a dignified job that provides economic security and access to opportunities and the resources they need to care for themselves and their loved ones. On housing, I believe that everyone deserves a safe and affordable place to live, now more than ever. We need affordable housing in all areas of our city, not just in the downtown core or in Boulevard Park. We need to address homelessness by working with the county and our regional partners, accepting offers of help when they are offered to us. On the environment, I was proud to work with our environmental advocates to create our first climate action plan. But now we need to make sure that it has teeth and that it can actually do good work in our community, not just sit on the shelf and collect dust. We need to invest in clean energy, reduce our reliance on cars, and protect and create more green space throughout our city, not just, again, in the downtown area. I'm running for Burian City Council because I believe that we need a council that is responsive to the needs of our community and that is committed to building a more just and equitable future for all of us. I have served on this council while using the food bank, as well as while supporting a family of six. I have experienced flooding in Boulevard Park, as well as the joys of amazing festivals that our city is known for. Burian's working families are complex, and I will be a council member who holds that truth close to my heart and fights for all solutions for all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, candidates. Next, we will take as many questions as possible from you, the audience. Once again, all candidates will have an opportunity to respond to all questions, even those directed to a specific candidate. Candidate responses will be limited to one minute per question. And I believe we have ample time in our schedule to hear all your questions. You may have thirty seconds to pose your question, and the candidates will have up to a minute to answer. One of our League members has a microphone which she will hold while you ask your question. She's standing in the back right now. We ask that you, if it is possible for you, to come to the microphone and ask the question where she is standing. If for some reason it is difficult for you to get to her, just raise your hand and she will come to you with the microphone. When you are recognized, please give your name and then ask your question. If you are unable to ask the question yourself, you may have it written on that card and give it to, um, our League member to read for you. But be sure you have put your name down on that card along with the question. If you are not comfortable asking your question in English, the interpreter assisting us this evening will do so on your behalf. If we run out of time before you get your question answered, we have asked all of the candidates to remain after this forum so that you can speak with them directly. I'm gonna kick off this part of our forum with the first question, and, uh, this is for all of you. It is a topic that one of you did address in your opening remarks, but may wish to elaborate more on it. The question is, Burian's housing continues to be more affordable when compared to the housing in other municipalities in Puget Sound. However, residents continue to struggle with affordability. What solutions do you have to increase affordable housing in Burian? And Sidney will start with you.
So, uh, I have been a firm supporter of affordable housing, and I'm really proud to have worked with people like our former deputy mayor, Marks, on, um, continuing and, uh, working through the Affordable Housing Demonstration Program, which allows zoning exemptions that have invited developers to bring creative developments of affordable housing here in Burian. I believe we need to expand on that. I fought to retain that program when it was on the chopping block um, in recent months, and that was kind of an ugly fight. I think that we also need to ensure people have, um, access to housing when they are forced to relocate. So tenant protections have been a huge issue, and sustaining those tenant protections and expanding upon them has made it much easier for people to get into housing and stay in housing. Um, I also want to look into expansion of multifamily, uh, tax exemption zones that can make it easier for developers, uh, and things like that, so, same time.
Patricia?
Housing is a right, not something that is a luxury. And unfortunately, we need to provide more affordable housing for our residents and certainly our incumbents, and certainly not just our incumbents, but certainly our constituents. So for me, um, having, having been, um, an individual that faced a foreclosure for my home when my first spouse died, and really trying to support my two children, it's really important that we provide tenant protections for those individuals that are here that have low income. In addition to that, I'd like to see us expand the ability to provide multifamily housing to our constituents within the, within the city. In addition to that, I would really like to see us work with and provide incentives to some of our partners. I don't know how we're working currently, as I'm certainly learning more about city council as I'm running for a city council. However, I'd like to see us provide some kind of incentives for some of our individuals that are looking at providing options and looking at homes. And so I'd like to look at how we can really work with them, and certainly some of those folks, to provide more affordable housing to our constituents.
Crystal?
Thank you. So you're right, uh, Burian, while we may be more affordable than some, we, that is slipping away from us quickly, and we actually have housing targets that we have to hit in order to accommodate the growth that our region is seeing. We have to boost our housing stock by thirty-six percent by twenty twenty, or twenty forty-four, which amounts to an additional seventy-five hundred housing units, or three hundred and thirteen units per year, which is actually three times our average currently. So we really need to focus on bringing those affordable housing options in. One such way that I propose is streamlining and simplifying the permitting and design review process. So when people are coming in to build more affordable homes, they can do so quickly with less permitting hoops to jump through, thus making it more attractive for developers to come to Burian. We also need to make sure that we're prioritizing our opportunity zones, which we're actually in one right now, as well as our low-income housing tax credits. So having a voice on the council, such as myself, who knows how to work with regional partners to make sure that we, um, are taking advantage of federal programs as well as county opportunities is crucial. Thank you.
And each of you has a moment to rebut or add to if there's something. Thirty seconds.
Yeah. Take, take the extra thirty seconds. We need more time.
This will be a theme that you'll see from me tonight because I believe this is important. I regret that my opponent isn't here to give you her answer, um, and I wish that you had the opportunity to hear what she had to say as well. But, um, I really do encourage you to look into the Housing Action Plan that the city of Burian has on our website. I was part of forming that plan and make sure you know what it entails so you can see what the targets are. And I'd love to answer your additional questions about housing after the forum. Thank you.
And I will also take the additional thirty seconds. Um, it is unfortunate that my opponent is also not here tonight because I think that you can look at the voting record as to how he's been voting with regards to affordable housing. And then unfortunately, many of our constituents are unhoused, and then having a challenge with the ability to afford housing.
Oh, I feel that it's unfortunate that my opponent is also not here because this is a vital subject, as I'm sure many that we're covering tonight are, and I'll take the extra thirty seconds because one minute is not enough time. I believe increasing density, allocating funding for rental assistance programs and getting into housing programs, such as through expansion of our human services, uh, funding, which, again, I have fought to increase, are all ways that we can work to, um, make it easier for people to get into, stay into housing, increase our housing stock. I believe that we need to build, uh, housing for people in all, um, all budgets. Increasing our low-income housing stock is vital, but also the missing middle. So my policy is housing for all, at all income levels. Thank you.
Now it's time for your questions. If you have one that you wish to ask, would you please stand up, go to the center aisle, and the, uh, our League member will come to you. Remember to give your name as well as stating your question.
Hello, I'm a member of the House of Representatives. And my question is, what does your ideal Burian look like for you? And what is a change that can bring us closer to that?
That obviously is asked of all of you. Let's stop, start with Patricia this time.
The ideal Burian for me is, I'd like to really look at and provide a little bit of what we're doing now. So currently for me, I came to Burian over twenty-nine years ago, and I loved it based upon how quaint it was. We're seeing a change in Burian. So I'd like to be able to maintain both the, not just the culture, but the feeling of Burian, as well as, as we look at creating the new, um, obviously, home, housing that we have. We need to look at providing sustainability because some of our older locations, and specifically some of our older buildings, don't have and are not built and provided with the need that we need. As we look at climate change, they don't have, you know, heating, they don't have air conditioning, those kinds of things. And I'd also like to look at, as we look at providing housing for our seniors, and certainly low-income folks, that we look at that. So I'd like to see a combination of both the old and the new, and not look at gentrification in Burian.
So my dream for Burian is a city where everyone's basic needs are met and our community can thrive. That means access to food, housing, healthcare, education, the things that make people safe and healthy. the things that make people safe and healthy. I think that we have made a lot of progress in that front, but we have a long way to go. And we know steps that we can take, such as making sure people have access to essentials, making sure there is enough affordable housing, making sure people can get access to healthcare, including mental healthcare. This takes focus, it takes investment, and it takes commitment. And these are things that I have maintained a very strong effort towards achieving, and I will continue doing that. I also want to echo what Patricia said about sustainability. We need to focus on the future of our community. We're raising children here. What the city looks like today is not going to be what it looks like tomorrow. We have to make sure we secure a future that is sustainable for generations to come. That means addressing climate change, that means addressing safety. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question, Benji. What I love about Burian and I see as an ideal Burian is that diversity is celebrated in our city. That's diversity of thought, diversity of background, ages. And in order to make changes to bring closer to that ideal, I think we need to make sure that our families are safe. And that includes our seniors and our youth. And the way that I see that happening is by, one way is increasing our human services funding. Currently, it's been set to eight dollars and fifty cents per capita with a hat tip to Council Number More for fighting for that additional fifty cent raise that comes out to four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars per year. In comparison, our police funding is at three hundred and eight dollars per capita. I'm not asking for that to be lowered, I'm asking for human services funding to be increased. The amount spent on policing is thirty-six times that spent on human services. So if we want to see our community safer, we should increase what keeps them safe, which is not just police services, but that is providing after-school programming, childcare opportunities, safe and affordable housing, safe roads and streets for people to drive on, activating our community spaces, and making Burian this celebrated space for diversity and inclusion, not just in any one way.
All right, let's go to our next question.
I tried to take the microphone from her. Ask you to the theater majoring me. I'm Jennifer Pichamba. I've lived in Burian my entire life. And my question for all three of you is, when you're elected, what is your goal in the first thirty days of being in office?
Let's start with Crystal on this one.
Thank you. Within our first thirty days, I think we need to start focusing on how to heal our community. Things have been very divided, very intense, especially the last seven months, while we have seen homelessness debated on a very public scale by our city council, often with, or actually with zero results aside from a really horrible camping or living ban. So we need to have an opportunity for all sides of the community, if you want to look at it by sides, but all of our community to actually talk and listen to each other. Most of our council meetings, actually all of our council meetings, where public comment is taken, it's one-sided. It is the public talking to council. I think we need to have the opportunity for the council to actually answer the public, to say, here's why I voted on things, or here's what I will do once I'm on the council in my case or in my companion's cases here, to say, here's what I, I hear you, and here's what I think should be done. And provide the public an opportunity to respond back to that, to build that relationship back so that the council is more accessible and transparent to the community that feels really harmed right now.
Sydney, you do this one next.
So my hope is that come January, the leadership in Burian will look very different and we will have a great shift in our priorities and our values and our goals. We have an immense backlog of work that has gone unfinished in council due to the divisiveness of our current leadership. And we have lots to catch up on. So I would really like to start addressing that backlog and working towards progress, shifting towards a data-driven approach to handling the many, many issues we face in our community, rebuilding the partnerships that have become fractured with a variety of organizations and entities across jurisdictions throughout this region. Burian thrives because we have built partnerships, and many of those partnerships have been fractured. So we need to repair that and also repairing the trust in our community of our constituents, building upon our relationships with each other and working together to move forward effectively and productively.
Patricia?
Thank you. For the first thirty days, I'd like to, first word I'd like to say is collaboration. I'd like to make sure that we are collaborating as a city council together, rather than working divisively with one another. I'd like to make sure that we're collaborating, collaborating not just as the city council, but also collaborating with our regional partners. Or from what I've seen, most recently, we're no longer working with them. We seem to be working against them. And then also collaborating with certainly our constituents. I'd like to see us meeting with the public and certainly our neighbors at least four times a year, where we sit down and talk to each of you and find out what's important to you. What do you want to see happening in your city? I don't have all the answers. None of us have all the answers. We really need to be listening to each of you and meeting with you and providing some transparency in our government, transparency with regards to budgets, transparency so you have an understanding of what's really happening in your city and feel you have a voice in our herd.
Thank you. Our next question?
Hi, Pamela Jorgensen, Burian resident. My comment or question is that I see a lot of parents in our neighborhood and in our city working long hours, nights, and weekends to support their families and pay their rent. And I don't think we have enough activities for our young people. And, you know, we all see them out on the streets, oftentimes being disruptive. So I'm wondering if you have any plans or if there are possibilities for improving that situation.
Let's have Sydney do this one first.
Yeah, so having two young kids in the city, I absolutely know we have a need for programming for our youth. In fact, recently, we had some programming on the chopping block that I fought to maintain that provides access to families regardless of their income that's run through the city. So that is a hundred percent a priority for me. I struggle, just like many, many parents, to keep my kids active and engaged in a variety of different, I guess, different programming throughout the year and especially in the summer months. So yes, I a hundred percent believe that we should be investing in that, making that a priority, ensuring our youth are doing something fun, proactive, educational, entertaining, keeping them out of trouble, keeping them off the streets. And that's something that is proven to direct them into a more productive path as they get older. So this is absolutely an investment in our future and in our youth's future, which again, when we're building for the future, we're preparing for our city to, you know, be sustainable for generations to come. We have to keep a focus on that. I believe we are fully capable of doing that, and I absolutely will maintain that as a priority.
Patricia?
As a single mother, I had to raise two sons that were, obviously, they had to be kept busy. So as I look at this, this was really important to me. I was kind of what you might call a helicopter parent, meaning that I believe that right now we need to certainly get back to the basics. Develop early education programs for children. Create parenting education programs to support and assist new first-time parents or parents in need of familial support and assistance. Develop community programs to further synergize our schools and our families, empowering youth and families. You know, there's some of those are in Georgetown, Voices of Tomorrow, education programs that would have reading, math, and science to really make these courses of interest, to increase scores and tests across the city of Burian or our students, sports education programs, really focusing on sports safety and injury prevention. And then promote an active lifestyle by encouraging and partnering with current after-school programs focused on programs based for interest for the children. So sometimes kids don't want to do sports, but they might like chess, air hockey, et cetera. So really creating programs to support communities by other methods as well. Thank you.
Pamela, thank you for this question. Again, I'm a mom of four, and the age ranges are, it's big, eight, twelve, fourteen, and sixteen. I think I got that right. My husband's nodding his head, so it looks like we're good. Burian has a wonderful Friday Youth Late Night Program. If you're familiar with Travis Thompson, now a famous rapper that's here from Burian, he came through that program. But I think we need to ask our youth what it is that they're looking for instead of planning without them, making sure we have pathways to employment as well, employment opportunities. So it's not just an after-school job or might not just be kids hanging out and creating art together, which is all wonderful things. But our community has a lot of low-income residents in it. And for a lot of kids, the only options that are available to them after high school are maybe joining the military, going right into a minimum wage job. We need to have those pathways that exist, things like apprenticeship programs and convenient jobs and other opportunities as well. And then also working with the Highline School District closely. They are fantastic partners if we call on them. Oh, I'm having to stop. Thank you.
I think that's a question that stimulates a lot of comments. So yes, we'll do the round again, okay?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm asking for my extra thirty. I just wanted to touch basis on a couple other aspects of this. So during the pandemic, I started a free online arts class program for youth through the Burian Arts Association. And the Burian Arts Association does, actually receives small grant funding from the city. So this is a really, really good example of how we can partner with different organizations throughout our community to help maintain diverse programming. Also, when we look at development of our community, we need to be working towards creating more spaces that are youth-focused, which is something I've worked towards, and also preserving our green spaces, which is really key. And I was an advocate for a city being able to purchase a park recently that we now own. So there's a lot of things we can do.
One thing I also wanted to echo is what Crystal said. I think it's important that we're making plans right now without talking to our children. And so it's definitely very important. During the pandemic, I educated my, I don't know, he's seven years old now, but my seven-year-old grandson, every two days a week, I was, he didn't have school, so I was on Zoom, working with him on his programming and what he had for school to prepare him. But it's also important, I think, to also encourage our seniors. There are opportunities for them where they've been a fabulous parent and they want to be involved with youth. And I think we forget that we need to also engage them as we're also looking at working with our students and our youth. Thank you.
Crystal, thirty seconds.
Thank you. That goes really fast. Again, I wish that my opponent were here so I can contrast my answers with hers. So hopefully you'll be able to ask her these questions as well. I think we also need to look at fixing our unused or underutilized parks. In Boulevard Park, that looks like Hilltop, right now it's an open field park, which is beautiful. But when King County left and we annexed that part in Burian, they even took the swing set itself. So now there's just a little outline of where the swing set used to be. So turn it into a dog park or turn it into something that kids could actually use would be fantastic and a way to really activate that space. When I was the vice president of the Sea Wolves Major League Rugby Team here in Seattle as well, I know that they have funding for parks as well that they can throw towards things. So activating that.
Thank you. But people can, if you're willing to stay after the forum is over, people can get more information from you. Okay, our next question?
Good evening. My name is August. This question is for all the candidates. What makes you the best choice for your position?
Let's start, let's start with Patricia this time.
As a thirty-year HR professional, I do this every day for a living. And what I mean by that is I have to collaborate, negotiate, and work with individuals that have varying interests from myself. I really have to look at what's best and what's most important for the employees I service. And in this role, I would be looking at my constituents, my neighbors, and each of you. What is best for you? What do you want to see happening? I also have a background where I've trained, and I was also an adjunct professor for about fourteen years. And also, one of the great skills that I have is conflict management and resolution. So I would also be able to work with my fellow council members as we work to creating an opportunity to develop a consensus, work together to create an opportunity where we can hear one another, and most importantly, hear each of you. And that's why, unlike my current, my opponent, who has, doesn't have that leadership skill and experience. So it's important that we really work and listen to each of you as constituents and my neighbors. Thank you.
Crystal?
Thank you. August, thank you for that question. There you are. Thank you for that question. I have done this job before, from 2018 to 2021. So I, as soon as I am elected, I can hit the ground running and actually start working, not bickering or debating endless conversations around it, working with anyone on the council. I've proven that in 2019, when we passed tenant protections, a full suite of tenant protections on a very divided council. It was passed unanimously. It did not care what, it did not matter what your ideology was, what your political leanings were. We all listened to each other, and that's the type of skill that I bring to the table to be able to work with anyone. I have passed, I helped pass the city budget. I have worked on building coalitions on major issues. Again, I've worked across the aisle. I like to see all sides of a problem and take actual action on that based on data and fact. I listen to our city staff when they give their recommendations. I listen to all of our commission members and will give my reasons why I might disagree. So at least my communication is transparent and my decision-making is clear.
Sydney?
How about this? I show up. I love this city. I have been dedicated to serving this city since long before I became an elected official. Again, that's why I was asked to run. I am committed to making this a better community for all of our people. And that also goes for people who don't agree with me. I am willing to work with people across the aisle on all sides. I actually have people who are completely opposite of me and my values and what I stand for openly talk about how they respect me because I am direct and I will communicate openly and I will seek common ground on issues. I have experience in this. I am somebody that you can trust to tell you where I stand and why I am in that position, why I stand for that. I have been working for many, many years to develop partnerships and relationships across our community and beyond our city limits. So I think that my dedication to this community speaks for itself. And I think that being here and being present for our community for accountability says something.
Thank you. Our next question?
Hi, my name is Nancy Kik. Thank you all for being here. My question is about what is your plan to bring renewed diverse communities into the process? How will you make government accessible to all residents that can't make the regular time and date, like personally? And what can you do as a council to make that more accessible? Thank you.
Let's, let's have Crystal take this one first.
Nancy, thank you for that question. I think it's crucial that we get new people involved. When I first ran for office back in 2017, before I was elected in 2018, we had lived in Burian for just over two years. And I did not feel welcome at city council meetings. I was told that my, my experience was not enough, that we were too new to the city to give our input, and I think that's wrong. I was told that as a renter, I don't, I'm not as invested in our community. I think that's also wrong. I think we need to foster ways, as a council, it's our responsibility to foster ways to bring the community together, especially to advocate for things that our city needs. I think it's important that we look at something that actually Patricia did mention earlier, I have down as well, to look at moving our meeting times and locations across the city to make it more accessible for folks to attend. That can look like something as simple as going across the street to Merrill Gardens, where we have a large senior citizen community that's going to a school gymnasium, maybe at Highline High School or even Evergreen, going to somewhere where we are in the community and more accessible for people to make it there. And also making sure that when folks come, they're able to fully participate. So we have child care. That's something I pushed for for four years. I want to get back on council to do as well.
Patricia?
Thanks again, Nancy, for the question. You know, I'm brand new to this, this process. I was certainly a person that had been involved in a number of different areas as a PCO when I was part of the Thirty-third LD, and then obviously on a variety, many, 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 many employer boards as an HR professional. It is really important for us to really advocate and help others to see the importance of being involved in their city. I think that we have an opportunity as city council members to really get out within our community and have a chance to meet in different forums with individuals of differing backgrounds. I'd also love to see more youth involved, whether it be individuals between the ages of eighteen and thirty, really get involved in the council. And so I've been doing that with my own family and also as I've worked with volunteers. It's important to make sure that we are opening up and making sure that everybody, regardless of their race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, et cetera, feel as if they can be a part of their city and then be represented. feel as if they can be a part of their city and then be represented.
Sydney?
Thank you. So I've been a big proponent of pushing to expand and translation um services through our meetings and our outreach, uh the pamphlets and information that we send out through the mail. Um, when we go business to business to talk to them about their concerns, um when we solicit feedback from our community members on a variety of city issues. I think we need to continue working to expand on that because we have an incredibly diverse community and we need to have uh accessibility for people regardless of what language they speak, what community, what corner of our community they're in. I think that we need to make things more accessible, so uh looking at different places and different times to host meetings, maybe expanding town halls so we can invite people from different corners of our community that can't always make it down on Mondays. And in the library at seven PM, it's it's difficult for people. And as a mother, I started coming to our council meetings, bringing my four year old children. So childcare is also a huge issue that I believe we should work towards.
Thank you all. That seemed to be the type of question that might generate some rebuttals. Do you want to do a thirty second round again?
Thank you. Um, as I mentioned before, I promise, uh I'm sorry if this is redundant, but I would really truly love to hear my opponent's answers and I'm going to keep bringing that up. Uh, something else I did on the, while on the council for four years, I live tweeted during our meetings from the dais, so making our meetings more accessible. Sometimes someone can't watch uh live streaming on the TV or over the internet. Uh, being able to tweet out what's happening was crucial. And for me, it was like taking notes. So basically I was just sharing my notes with the community. And I recall, I realized that I was recalling information better as a council member by sharing my thoughts that way. And I would love to see us also invest in new technology. We're just south of Seattle. We have a technology hub. We can do more.
Go ahead.
So there's a number of, a variety of different areas. Technology, as Crystal mentioned, certainly childcare. And I currently work for an organization that we just had a large convention and we actually provided language justice in eight languages. I really appreciate the fact that we have interpreter here for Spanish, certainly. But we have individuals that are um from African nations that might be Eastern European. And so we really need to expand those services. And I know a number of folks would be willing to do that as we provide additional access.
Thank you. Uh, I believe that we need to work to expand programs like our Community Connectors Program, which is where we bring people who represent different demographics across our community, different cultures. And they actually go out into the community where there are cultural hubs and they can communicate directly with people who don't always feel that they are well represented. And government don't necessarily have the time or the energy or believe that they're being heard if they are coming to government. So I think that expanding that outreach is really vital and also making sure people understand that we do hear them and we do care and being responsive to their needs so they have trust in government.
Our next question.
Hi, I'm Colleen Hinton. And uh before I ask my question, I just want to express my serious disappointment that the other three candidates aren't here. And I want to thank the League for going ahead without them regardless. Thank you. Uh, the League has been a respected institution for a long time and is nonpartisan. And thank you for being here. Uh, so my question has to do with your thoughts about climate policy. Um, I am really worried about that fabulous climate action plan that the community helped to develop and sitting on a shelf somewhere gathering dust, as someone said earlier. Um, and I worry a little bit that the focus on climate has become, what are we going to do to prepare for it rather than what are we going to do to prevent it and to stop inventing greenhouse gases? Um, so as a city, I wonder if you have ideas sorry, as to how we can uh prevent greenhouse gases in the first place and really prioritize that among the many existing priorities that we have that are so urgent and so need need such attention. Thank you.
Patricia, will you take this first?
Certainly. Thanks for the question, Colleen. Climate justice, I'm sighing because climate justice is real. I think many of us thought about it, heard about it, and we didn't realize the impact that it's having. So I'd like to certainly see us increase and develop more green spaces within the city of Burian, specifically require rooftop gardens and newer high rise buildings and development projects to generate clean air, obviously provide jobs that would also provide jobs for landscapers and provide jobs for other folks within the community. Um, add community well kept gardens to encourage more sustainable family practice, excuse me, farming practices and programs, which also creates jobs and workforce development programs, creating small neighborhood parks that might be a half to one acre or less that are similar to Dottie Harper Park, Eagle Landing Park, Seahorse Park, et cetera, which would add swings, big toys, and then also recreational activities in these parks, adding um creating bike lanes and charging stations. And then also looking at the fleet that we have in the city of Burian currently and make sure that they're, that they're actually electric vehicles.
Crystal?
Back the other way.
Sorry.
Colleen, thank you for this question. Uh, in addition to increasing green space, which I agree with, um and requiring our buildings to be LEED certified or built green, Burian is known as a tree city. We have a sign right off of five oh nine that says, welcome to Burian, we are a tree city. And I want to make sure we're living up to that. So we're protecting the trees that we have and building upon that. But also we need to see where uh climate action intersects with all of our policies. And luckily we have a fantastic staff who do look at this, but I believe we have one individual dedicated to climate action in Burian on the staff. Doesn't mean we need to hire more, but it doesn't mean that every policy that we that we put forward needs to be viewed through a climate lens. That can be done in things like housing, making sure that we're requiring different types of buildings that are more green and eco friendly, as well as things like economic development. Maybe there's a a permitting bonus or a lack of a fee that can be paid if a business comes in and they actually show that they bring in carbon neutrality to Burian. Finally, I think like the Affordable Housing Demonstration Program that I helped to pass while on council that encouraged creative housing types throughout the city, we can look at a climate action plan test program. What if we encouraged up to five different great climate action programs throughout the city of Burian as well to see what could work?
Sydney?
Thank you for that question. Uh, I, I don't want to be redundant, so I'm going to try and counter what my counterparts up here have said, but I I feel like we share a lot of similar ideas and values. Um, I think that we need to look towards the experts who advise us on how we can uh be a more climate friendly city. Um, I'm proud to have supported the People for Climate Action when they came to us and wanted us to start um educating people more on the importance of things like heat pumps. Um, I have worked to um protect our tree canopy and I think we should expand on that. I think we also need to invest in alternative transportation, which means cycling out our current city fleet for um electric vehicles, investing in public transportation, investing in walkability in our city. I've worked to identify areas that um we need to prioritize for improving or actually creating sidewalks, particularly around schools. Um, why don't we have scooters, right? Everywhere else has scooters. So um creating more alternative um transportation models, um, and that's time.
Do you want to address this a little further? We can do one more round. Thirty seconds. Okay. Crystal?
I do, I do. Um, I think we also need to talk about building our housing that we're, that we need to have coming online near transit nodes. So making sure that we're reducing the reliance on vehicles and the the harms that they cause, as well as using our voice as a city council to lobby our county, state, and federal officials to do more action as well. We put together a legislative agenda that goes to the state as well as to our federal delegation every year. Climate should be interwoven with every single thing that we are talking about because it impacts every single thing that we are talking about. And I wish my opponent were here so she could share her thoughts on that as well.
Patricia?
Um, it's really, again, unfortunate that my um opponent isn't here as well. However, it's really important that we also work with our regional partners from a standpoint of transportation. I talked about a number of different issues, but I had a crazy idea that we could have a trolley in the middle of the city, specifically that is a trolley that is providing opportunity for us. We have obviously our partnership with Metro, but we also have some opportunities with sound transit as well. So I'd like to see us really leverage those opportunities as well.
Uh, so I actually serve on the South King area transportation board or skateboard um to work with our partners across the region to identify ways that we can improve transportation, specifically things like public transportation. Um, I think that one aspect of improving our community and how we respond as a whole is education. I think we need to absolutely be investing in public education of how each individual can make a change uh in our community for a more sustainable future and how we can act as a whole as a city.
Thank you all. Next question.
Hi, I'm Carol Fandival. What ideas do you have for making Burian more livable for senior citizens?
Let's have, let's have Sydney start with this one.
Thank you. Um, I believe we absolutely need to focus on people's ability to age in place and that means housing. That means people have someplace secure to call home. I um, I experienced so many people asking me on a regular basis if I know of any place that their parents or they might be able to find housing, a room to rent somewhere, a floor that they might be able to sleep on, which is absolutely heartbreaking. Um, I'm getting emotional right now because it is so, so um it's just heart wracking watching people struggle uh when they should be experiencing, I guess, the golden years of their lives. So um, livability means housing. It absolutely does. I think we also can increase and expand on our programs that the city offers to our seniors. Uh, like, for example, at the community center, we have a variety of programming that um enhances people's quality of life. We have education programs. We have exercise programs, um all kinds of different a variety of things that uh can improve their life. I think that we also need access to services, so when people do need support um when they need transportation, it's available for them. Thank you.
Crystal?
You saw me writing my answer. Carol, thank you for that question. Uh, we definitely need, I I've heard a lot about um needing transit that meets people where they're at. So uh in Boulevard Park alone, we had a couple of bus lines. I think it's down to one primarily right now. That's frustrating and very difficult. And you have to walk quite a ways to get to it. We know that's the same thing in um Three Train Point and Maplewild and places where individuals may have lived for for a couple of decades, many decades for our seniors. They can't access a way to get to downtown or a way to get to um the hospital for for medical care. That's, we're failing them in that moment. So when we talk about housing, the ability to downsize or right size housing for seniors who may not have family that lives in a larger house anymore and they want a smaller place that is more manageable for them and not necessarily for a retirement community. So being able to have housing that is near transportation and that has services co-located. So this multi-use residential where there's shops on the bottom, things like grocery stores, uh dental clinics or a health clinic where people can just be there and go downstairs for the services they need.
Patricia?
Should I just say ditto? No, I'm joking. But um, you know, as an individual who has a mom that is a senior that really should retire, I think it's just truly important that we look at a variety of different kinds of services. And so in my notes, I just talked about the fact that we need services that are medical services, social services for our seniors, as well as a location where they don't have a food desert or they can obviously have a grocery store or they have transportation hubs. And we should also be looking at community programs for them. As I mentioned earlier, I really enjoy working and, you know, talking to my grandchildren. I know that children can oftentimes really reinvigorate many of us. And so I think it would be really beneficial for us to really invest in our seniors and provide them that opportunity as well. And then lastly, um, we need to look at, as I mentioned earlier, transportation hubs and really work on providing an opportunity for us to go throughout the city, not just in the one that bus goes on Military Road near where I live. We need to provide more transportation services as well.
Are there other comments that you want to use another thirty seconds for? Or shall we move on? Yep, shall we move on? Move.
We can move on.
Next question.
Hello, and thank you to all three of you. Uh, my name is Carter. I have lived here for three months and three days and I'm a happy resident. So thank you to all of you for just the welcoming community, all of you truly. And so it's a once upon a time for five, six year olds who got to tag along with his mom to flying club and school board and city council meetings. My sincere statement is let there be forty four year olds at every city council meeting and perhaps might improve, you seem to suggest it. Uh, stability concerns that um four year olds are great things, so far as I'm concerned. My only question, I've honestly gotten enough information to make my alcoa suit tonight. I could not possibly say for whom, uh, obviously.
Your question?
What was the last thing you changed your mind on and what made you change it?
What if you changed your mind?
Would you, would you restate that?
What was the last thing that made you? What was the last thing you changed your mind on or a significant thing you recently changed your mind on? And what persuaded you to change your mind?
Thank you. That's an interesting one. Uh, let's start with um Patricia on this one.
I knew it wasn't going to be me this time.
That's a hard question. I think um I'll tell you probably the the last thing that I changed my mind on is actually running for city office and city council. And so what I'll share with you is kind of something funny. So as I shared, I have two adult sons and I told them that I was going to be running for city council. They honestly told me I was crazy, but they knew that I had lofty goals and more importantly, was always up for a fight and was always, you know, spending my time volunteering for something. And so I first thought about it, thought about it again, and then changed my mind to run. And so I'm actually happy that I that I did because I really do support this community. As I said earlier, I've lived here for twenty nine years, raised two adult sons and still here and brought my spouse from Oregon to live here and he has obviously enjoyed it as well. So that is what I thought about and then changed my mind and here I am today, sitting in front of you.
Sydney?
This is the hardest question of the night. Um, I'm going to preface my answer by saying I feel like I am constantly learning and growing. And so while my opinions tend to gravitate in the same general direction as they start, I am often evolving them and sometimes they do change. Um, one specific example, I spent like three hours just talking to somebody in our community about um adjustments on development that they uh and and repairs on part of a park that they wanted to see go in a different direction. And I listened to three hours worth of their position and it definitely made me shift my understanding of the issue a little bit more and um definitely made me rethink my position and be willing to kind of be more accommodating towards their perspective. Is that, is that my stop sign? Okay.
Crystal?
Thank you. Was it Cart, what's your name? Carter? Thank you for your question. Sorry, I didn't hear it all the way. Um, the last thing I changed my mind on and why was literally having dinner. So we'll skip that one, but going into, um, you know, it's it's how I uh value and listen to our small business community. Uh, when I was on the council before, uh, my my stance was still open. I would listen, but I was not, I was engaging in conversation. That's something I've learned a lot from in the last couple of years. And the reason that I changed my mind is I just started listening. Not with an agenda, but just asking, what did I do uh from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one that you would have liked to see me do differently? Uh, what were the decisions that I made that impacted you and just listened? Didn't wasn't defensive, didn't give my reasons why I voted the way I voted, just listened. And because of that, I have really gained any respect for a lot of our small businesses here in Burian, but especially what way that means that we can build wealth for our immigrant refugee communities, especially through business partnerships and mentorships, seeing it as a way to really bring a lot of diversity and beauty to our downtown core, but also throughout the entire city and focusing on business development there. So I'm excited to bring that to council.
All of you then will get ten seconds.
I just have for ten, but thirty, I don't care.
I, I just wanted to say welcome to Burian. We're, we're happy to have you. Um, I'm so glad to hear that you're finding this to be a welcoming community. It is literally the most supportive community I have ever found. Also, our food is amazing. In case you haven't found that out yet. Yeah, uh, even after living here for so long, I continue discovering new things to love about this city all the time. So I hope that you will too.
I suspect that that probably is a blanket response, so we'll go, we'll go on to the next question.
Hi, I'm Charles Shaffer. Uh, first of all, thank you for the three of you not being afraid to be here tonight, unlike our opponents. My question is, what neighborhood do you live in and what will you do to promote neighborhoods and neighborhood centers?
Let's take um Crystal first on this one.
Charles, thank you for your question. I live- Charles, thank you for your question. I live in the Evansville neighborhood, um, just, I was Boulevard Park for the first few years. We actually got married at our house there, right under the flight path. Um, that is how many people know Boulevard Park is, oh, it's under the airplanes. So that's something that I would really like to, um, to change and promote something a little bit different about that area and to promote neighborhood unity is having more of our events in this second kind of downtown area. That's what Boulevard Park is turning into, is a whole nother business area. So instead of a, a sort of Boulevard Bar, Boulevard Park block party, what if we had our farmer's market moving there every other week or for half the year? Being able to bring more people from across the city to those areas. Uh, we have a public beach down in Three Tree Point that people can't access because it's, um, people have kind of grandfathered in, uh, their own rights to the beach. People should be able to access that beach, and we should be able to have activities and activate there as well. It's for everyone. We're all paying these taxes. We all have access to these things, to these things the city is maintaining. So, oh, we're stopping now. Thank you for the question.
Patricia?
Thanks again for that question, Charles. I live in the Boulevard Park area, and unfortunately, 10 years ago, I understand that the city councils, we were annexed to be part of Burian. And unfortunately, I was told and just learned, it's being a candidate, that there was some fund that was supposed to be provided to Boulevard Park, and nothing has happened. Unfortunately, um, Boulevard Park is a really lovely neighborhood and very, very diverse. And I'd really like to see a variety of different events that we currently have in the downtown core move to that area. And more importantly, I think in every single area, I mean, right now, we have a food desert. No one has a place for a grocery store in Boulevard Park. We don't have any other types of services. And so it's truly unfortunate that that has really been missed. And so I'd really like to see Burian start focusing on many of our other neighborhoods as opposed to those that are economically wealthy.
Thank you. Uh, so I live in the Five Corners neighborhood, and I am really, really lucky because we have incredible access to things like a wide array of grocery stores, um, walkability to downtown, pretty much anything you need. Um, Burian is considered one of the most walkable cities in the entire state, something I'm very proud of and repeat very frequently. Um, unfortunately, that is not equally dispersed throughout our community. As we've heard, we have areas that are food deserts. We have areas that have, uh, not great access for transportation. Um, they don't have as easy access to so many of the services that I can quickly walk to. And I think that we need to absolutely invest in community hubs, in cultural hubs, where people have development for all of the things they need. Um, we need to make sure that we are equitable in our investment throughout the city. And while our downtown core and development of it, that's not the only part of the city. Other, other neighborhoods deserve investment too.
We have another question back there?
Hi, my name is Kelsey. Um, I know we're all friends, but this is a curveball. Um, as leaders, it's really important to be vulnerable and learn from our mistakes. And so I'm just wondering if you could all share a time that you made a mistake and you're learning from it.
Sydney, will you take this first?
Thank you, Kelsey. Um, I believe that there have been moments where I have been very vulnerable in my position. I have, um, been very open and expressive about my emotions and my feelings and my values. And there have been moments, intense situations where, um, perhaps I have expressed my frustration in ways that were, I would like to think, um, misinterpreted by people, but people's opinions on how they interpret things are unique to them. And so I think that, um, learning to express my feelings with more patience, more understanding, and in ways that are clearer and less subject to, uh, a broad interpretation would be, um, ideal. And that's something that I have worked on. It's been an interesting couple of years, but again, I, I believe I've tried to grow, and, um, I think that's been reflected in my service.
Crystal?
Thank you for that curveball question. That's good. Um, I, I did just mention, uh, my, my growth with the business community, which I hope is, we will be able to be reflected on time on council. Um, something else that I have worked really hard on is listening for understanding, not listening for an opening. Um, and I'm refusing to look at my husband right now in case he disagrees, and I do not do a good job at this at home. I hope he's gonna nod. Um, but listening for understanding means it's, it's active listening, repeating back what it is that I think I heard, and make sure that I understand where you're coming from. That is something I've worked really hard at developing. It is a skill. It is not something that any of us are born doing. We are born with that tiny lizard brain of ours, really fighting to be first and to be heard first. So by listening for understanding instead of an opening, I'm trying to better understand why something matters to the people that I'm talking to, asking clarifying questions, saying, I think I heard you say this, is that accurate? And then being able to make policy decisions based on that, or not even in city council, this is a useful thing in a marriage with four children or with friends and family as well.
Jason?
Thank you, Kelsey, for that question. And as an HR director, I learn daily, by minute. And I also work for a union, and I've never worked at an organization where people are very open to tell me that I'm wrong. So, um, daily I have to learn something new. And, um, you know, Crystal mentioned it just a few moments ago, that you really need to, in human resources, listen for understanding. And also, more importantly, listen to clearly understand the individual and make sure that you provide space for the individual to share, and so that they feel that they have agency and an opportunity to clearly, um, commit. I can't even talk. I'm sorry. It's been a long week. Actually, they have an opportunity to clearly delineate what their feelings are and share with you how they feel. So this is something that I have to do on a daily basis. And so learning for me is something that I do oftentimes every single day.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I'm Meg Ben White, and I'm with the League of Women Voters, um, nonpartisan. I'm gonna stress that. Um, one of the things that we offer is, of course, candidate forums, um, but we also offer issue forums. And we, we, we get experts in the field, professors, policymakers, legislators, and host a forum. And I'm wondering, if we did something like this for the city of Burian, what would be a topic that you think the voters need to hear the most from?
Crystal, will you take this first?
Sure. Um, I mentioned at the start, Meg, thank you for your question. I mentioned at the start of this that I, I lead a volunteer organization that teaches free self-defense and bystander intervention training. Part of the self-defense training that I teach is conflict de-escalation. I believe that is something that everyone in this room, in our community, in our nation, if we're being honest, could really use. It isn't just active listening. It's how to take a situation that might be here and bring it down so that you're actually able to hear each other. That would be a fantastic opportunity for people to employ in day-to-day life when having conversations with your neighbors who might disagree with you over, you know, that parked car that's been there too long and they're going to call code enforcement, or I think the unhoused community should go over here, or should be swept, or should have housing. When those emotions run high, conflict de-escalation is a fantastic, uh, tool to be able to bring it back down and be able to have good conversations where you can then employ active listening, which doesn't work when emotions are running really high. So I think that'd be a fantastic opportunity.
Patricia?
So, um, as I mentioned earlier, um, I'm obviously a director of human resources, and one of the things that I do have an opportunity to provide to my employees is, um, leadership and development training. Something that we just provided was a class on the seven forms of respect. And I think this is truly important when you're referencing and talking about your neighbors and your constituents. And the reason why I bring this up is that each of us as an individual has a different idea about what respect looks like to each of us. And so this is something that's really important that I've learned to certainly love to certainly provide to the council and certainly talk to my constituents about it. The form of respect, what I'm looking for from respect is different for me. It's also different for Crystal, what, what they believe, as well as Sydney, what she believes respect. I think this is a really important task and, and subject for this to really understand because respect is so very different for each of us. And so having an opportunity to learn that, having an opportunity to understand what that looks like for each of us, would be an important skill set and helping us to understand and work more collectively and collaboratively together.
I really appreciate this question, and I also appreciate, uh, the responses we've heard thus far. Um, I believe in terms of a topical issue for a forum in our community right now, homelessness is something that is at the forefront of much of our conversations. And, uh, the opioid epidemic is also a major concern in our community for many, many people. And these are two issues that I think vastly go, um, misunderstood, um, and have a lot of, um, misinformation floating around about them. I absolutely value and prioritize data-driven, um, scientific, uh, education on issues like these. I have spent many, many years working in, uh, the field of reporting on things like, uh, drug policy and, um, the medical research behind it. And I think these are areas that people absolutely need to hear from experts. So I would very much welcome that.
Sounds like we've done some rebuttal. I wanted to, uh, bring up something a little bit more concrete, uh, other than just conflict de-escalation, but for our community, um, uh, financial management would be a fantastic, uh, seminar or, or course to, to give to the community, and we can break it down into three areas. One being with youth and getting started. What does it take to open a checking account? How do you balance your finances? For families, a path to homeownership to build wealth and wealth generation. Um, and then seniors, what is it like to, you know, downsizing, uh, will and estate planning, things like that, things that people just assume are being taught in schools, which aren't always the case anymore. My kids no longer are learning how to balance a checkbook. I'm teaching them, and I'm not always the best teacher.
Another real concrete issue that I'd like to certainly talk about is certainly safety and crime in our community. And I think that's certainly of real importance to each of you as constituents. I think oftentimes we forget and we look to our police to help us with those areas. And I'm not saying that they don't need to support us. However, I'd like to look at where we look at more community policing, where our community specifically where the police are actually walking through our downtown core, and also looking at an opportunity for us to re, um, really rebuild and talk about neighborhood watch programs as well, to obviously educate each of us as neighbors so we really understand what that looks like and have an opportunity to support one another as constituents and more importantly as neighbors.
Oh, there are good answers, more good answers. Uh, I think that education is an amazing thing, and so much can be done with it. Um, another topical issue that kind of ties into what we've heard about, um, addressing crime. Um, a, a subject that's been pretty important to me personally and also in my work on council is addressing domestic violence. Um, I serve on the Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force, so I partner with, um, leaders from across the county, including, uh, prosecutors, um, experts, things like that, to address domestic violence in our communities. And it's a, a subject matter that, um, is sort of an outlier in crime in that it's not a poverty-driven crime, for example. It's not necessarily something that is particular to any one community, demographic, age, anything. It's something that affects everyone, and it's something that is vastly misunderstood or not understood. So I think that that would be a really, really good, um, way to focus on prevention and addressing that in our community.
Thank you, audience, for the broad variety of questions and the civility with which it was all directed. Thank you so much. We're now going to go to our candidates' closing statements. Uh, each will have one minute to sum up, and we'll reverse the order from the opening statements, which means, Crystal, you will go first.
Thank you. Uh, thank you again for your time and attention this evening, and apologies again that you don't have someone to compare and contrast me with. I'm asking for your vote because I have a proven track record of actually getting things done in our community. In my first term on council, I worked to make Burian a safer, more livable place for everyone. With council support, I added a successful arrest diversion program to address the root causes of low-level crime, helped to implement a community court to assist with diversion and reducing recidivism, championed a $5 per hour hazard pay of ordinance for grocery workers during the COVID pandemic, worked with climate advocates to help create the Climate Action Plan, and to take measurable steps towards lowering emissions and greater environmental protections, and pushed for a study into the causes of flooding in Boulevard Park instead of just ignoring it. I'm running for election because I believe that Burian has the potential to be an even better place to live, work, and play, as well as raise a family. I'm committed to working with the community to address our challenges with decisive action instead of more bickering, and will work on Burian more than just the downtown core and small businesses, but throughout the city as well. And I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you again to the League and King County Library and the blog for hosting the forum tonight, and all of you here and at home for taking your time tonight to learn more about your options for your next city council. I don't know about you, but I'm tired of the inaction and the bickering going on with our current council by opportunities pass us by, and our people fall further behind. It's time for a change in leadership. We need leaders with experience and dedication to Burian. We need leaders who will place the needs of our community first, who will listen to you, our constituents, and work collaboratively for the good of all who live, work, and play here. I'm a 29-year Burian resident with the training, skills, and experience to move us out of this rut of inaction and into the future. As our city grows and faces challenges, we need strong, committed people at the wheel. I'm the leader we need. My name is Patricia Hudson, and I ask for your vote for the city council position number four. Thank you.
Sydney?
Thank you again, everyone, for being here and for hosting this. I am so encouraged seeing so many people here seeking to be educated and informed about making their vote. I encourage everyone to continue that, and I think it's very unfortunate my opponent's not here, and I will aid you and assist you in making an informed decision between us. Um, what I will say is, I have immense support from our community for my candidacy here. I have backing from teachers, healthcare professionals, labor, elected officials at the county level, at the city level, at the state level. I have so many different organizations that are in my corner right now because they have seen my track record. They don't have to guess at what I might do. They know what I have done, and I have fought for this community, and I will continue doing that. So I would urge you to look to that, and I would urge you to support somebody who has a track record you can count on, who is trusted and experienced, who is dedicated to serving this community. Thank you all so much for coming.
Before we go to applause and other comments, I do have some announcements on behalf of the League that I, I wanted to give you. Uh, first of all, before we close, are there candidates for other offices in the audience this evening? If so, would you stand and introduce yourself, please?
Stephanie Tidholm, um, Highline School Board of Directors for District One.
Great.
Um, Carlos Ruiz, uh, Highline School District, uh, District Four.
Thank you. On that note, I'd like to let you all know that you should come back to this very same room next Tuesday. The League is going to be having a candidates forum for the Highline School District Directors, and that will, one will begin at 6:30 PM. Um, I want to thank our timers. They've done that is, that is one of the toughest roles because you have to concentrate on, on stopwatch and the cards, and everything that's being said, you know, goes right over your head unless you really are are multi-talented. Um, I want to thank our videographer. I want to thank the, uh, the translators who are here. I, um, also hope that the candidates can stick around for a little while so that if people want to talk with you individually, they can. Uh, remember, if you have family or friends who were unable to attend this forum, give them the link for viewing it on our League of Women Voters website. And lastly, the League hopes that you are all prepared to vote. Remember that in Washington, you can now register to vote up to and including up to and including on Election Day, November 7. You can go to kingcountyelections@kingcountylelections.gov/elections to verify that your voter registration is up to date. And you can also sign up for the ballot alert program. Signing up for this service means you'll get an email or text message when your ballot is mailed, when it's received, if there's a problem reconciling your signatures, and when your ballot's been counted. Voter pamphlets will be mailed on October 17. Ballots will be mailed out to all voters on October 18 and they must be postmarked or dropped off in a ballot drop box by November 7. So thank you all for coming and thank you to our panelists.